Legal meeting.
It's not fault.
That's what Paul always says.
That's why I don't know. You look just like a school media person.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, Ned.
Welcome to the 206th Annual Meeting of the Town of Bristol. We'll begin with our Pledge of Allegiance and a call upon Herb Darcy if he would lead us in the pledge this morning. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you just remain standing for a second, we'll just do a brief invocation. The people who care. We are, here we are again, taking the time to attend town meeting. We are but a small portion of the people who are entitled to be here. There are so many other things we could be doing today. We could be shopping, we could be going to some late winter event, we could be skiing, we could be home sipping coffee and watching the birds at the feeder, we could be cleaning the car, or we could be just resting up after a long week. But we've chosen to be here. Why? Because we care. Because we know it's important to exercise our citizenship. Along with our precious rights, we know come responsibilities. Today, we have a unique opportunity to impact our community. We will be deciding on how our taxes will be spent, we will have a say on how important public services will be delivered. The decisions we make today will shape the future of our beloved town. We care. Town meeting is a remnant of our colonial heritage. Early New Englanders believed that local government should arise from the people, not be imposed upon the people. They believed that common people could be trusted to govern themselves openly, orderly, and fairly. And we're here today to honor that trust. Let us proceed today in that spirit. While we may have different points of view, may our discussions today be thoughtful and well-presented, may we treat each other with dignity and respect, may we leave here today assured that our community remains healthy and strong. Why? Because we care. For this, we aspire, hope, and pray. Thank you. We begin with introductions of our town officials, and I'll begin to my right with our Budget Committee.
I'm Paul Regan, I'm a member of the Budget Committee and the current chair.
I'm Susan Serrano, I'm full chair.
I'm on the Budget Committee, I'm very happy to be here, thank you.
Joe Carisca, a Budget Committee member.
We cannot hear you up here.
I'm Joe Carisca, both, I'm part of the Budget Committee.
Kenny, Budget Committee member.
And to my left, the Selectmen's Table, beginning with our town clerk.
Raymond Simpson. Do you hear me, both?
I hear you, yeah, wonderful.
Christina Goodwin, the town administrator.
Glassit, Select Board.
Carol Brown, Select Board.
Don Hillbronn, Select Board.
Les Diamond.
Scott Seidner, Select Board.
We also have with us our town council today, Sean Tangway, who's sitting up here in the front. Hopefully, we won't have much of a need to call upon him today. This is our annual meeting for the residents, registered voters here in the town of Bristol. In order to participate today, you do need to be a registered voter. Are there any non-residents who are here today? If you just raise your hand. There are a couple, and thank you. As I commonly say, when it comes time to voting, we don't want to see you move your lips. The other people who we do allow to participate today would be town officials, and so any town department heads, basically, unless there's some objection, we will let them participate as well. Anybody else other than a town official would have to be granted permission to speak by the body itself. With regard to warrant articles, we're going to take them in order as they appear on your warrant today. I'll read the article, there will be a person who will make a motion, there'll be a second, and then we'll give the person who made the motion the opportunity to speak. Then we'll open up the article to questions and comments. Speakers must come to the microphones, it's important, we've already seen that that's an issue. So you need to come to the microphone so everyone can hear. All comments and questions should be directed to the moderator. You need to speak loudly enough for people to hear you, and when you first come to the microphone, at least the first time you come to the microphone, you should identify yourself so that people will know who you are and that you're a citizen. If you have amendments to any of the warrant articles, the amendments must be presented in writing. What an important, and we won't accept it until they are in writing. The other thing that is very important for you to know, under parliamentary procedure, you can't get up, speak, give us a diatribe, and then finish by making a motion. You have to make your motion first and then speak to your motion. Of course, it goes without saying, if you do speak today, we request that there be no profanity, that you keep your comments relevant to the subject, and that you try to be as on point as possible, try to be succinct. We always say the best speech is a three-minute speech. As far as voting is concerned, we try to do everything we can by voice vote. If we have difficulty determining the outcome based on voice vote, we'll have a show of hands, and we'll count to show of hands. If we necessary, we would have a ballot vote, and again, ballot votes can be requested, and if there are sufficient number of people who want one, we'll have a ballot vote today. Generally, I vote with the body, so I'm not going to break any ties or make a tie, so I'll be voting with the rest of the body. My role today is to make sure that the meeting is fair and efficient, and I'll do that as best as I can. I do screw up, I make mistakes at times, so if in fact I do make a mistake today, please don't hesitate to point that out so it can be corrected. And with that, I do want to make one recognition, though, before we begin, and that's a recognition of Walter Waring, who has been recognized in our annual report. I don't know if anybody would like to speak to that.
Thank you, Ned, and good morning, everyone. This year's town report, the board pretty much didn't really even have to think about it, there was one person that came to mind, and that was Walter Waring. Walter's been involved in the town for many years, particularly serving on the Budget Committee. I've served with Walter for many years on the committee myself. So is Walter in the... I'm looking for you in the crowd, Walter, so... Yeah. So Walter, I want to thank you for your service to the town. We have a very generous gift here donated to the town, or to the town to give to us from the Bristol Botanist, and it's an honor to be the one presenting this gift to you. So thank you, Walter.
Thank you very much. If I may, I'm very honored to be here today and to receive this honor. The thing that hurts me the most is the Budget Committee and the talented people on the Budget Committee are the ones that deserve the recognition, and I'm so delighted to have worked with Paul and so, and Buzz. I just, I don't know what to say. Thank you very much. I love representative government, and I'm glad to see representatives here. I just hope I never see an empty space on the ballot again. I love it, and I want to thank Joe Carisca especially, this is beautiful. One day, my wife received some real bad news, and she came home and she was in a bad way. And somebody, and I haven't been able to find out who it was, sent us a random act of kindness, and with the bad news she had, it really lifted her up, and I want to appreciate the Bristol Botanists and all the people in Bristol, and whoever it was that sent those flowers. Thank you very much.
So, we can move on to our warrant. Our first article is Article Nine. We had prior articles, Articles One through Eight, which were the election of officers, and the voting on land use issues, and those were voted on at our annual election, which was last Tuesday, the 11th. And you can find those results on the town's website. We begin today with Article Nine to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the Budget Committee's recommended sum of $9,661,348 for general municipal operations. The Select Board recommends $9,685,325. This article does not include appropriations contained in special or individual articles addressed separately. And is there a motion? Motion moved by Paul Regan and seconded by... Who's that? Scott Sandigan.
Sir? I have no idea which motion, but the motion doesn't say which amount of money.
I just read the article that...
There's two different lots here, figures there. The motion to approve, but the motion approved doesn't say which number.
There are two sentences there. The amount to be approved is in the first sentence, which is the amount to raise and appropriate. The second sentence indicates what the Select Board had recommended. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, and would you, Mr. Regan, would you like to address your motion?
I do want to talk about the budget. Before I do, I want to make just a general comment. Not sure what that is. If some of you have read the report that I wrote that's in the town report from the Budget Committee, it goes into some budget detail to explain what's going on, and I've come to the thought that maybe that's a lot of detail. Someone like me, I'm a retired engineer, I like numbers, I like spreadsheets, I like to dive in and figure out how things work, I think that's good to have in a Budget Committee member. Probably not so good to have in somebody standing up here at the front of the room talking to you. So if you were interested, and we were alone, I could go on for at least an hour talking about the budget. I think that you'll run me out of the room if I try to do that. So I'm going to try to stay higher level, big picture, and be relatively quick. If you want more information, feel free to come to talk to me. If you really want a lot of information, I encourage you to join the Budget Committee. I think that, so we have a number, the $9,661,348 that we're asking, that you're voting on, that asking you to approve. I think that the main concern of almost everyone in this room is, how does this affect my property taxes? How is this going to change my bill? So I actually want to point out that the budget is made up of three main sections. You've got general operating funds, which are the expenses to run the town, you've got debt service, and you've got the water and sewer department. The water and sewer department are what's called an enterprise fund, they're run separately. None of your property taxes go to fund that. So what affects your taxes is really the line in the budget that talks about general fund operations and debt service. So the number, the $6,661,000, is about a five and two-thirds percent increase from last year's number. But if you look at what's going to affect your taxes, which is the general fund operations and debt service, that's up just a little over 5%. And that's not all taxes. You pay taxes to make up the difference between revenues and expenses. And revenues right now are actually projected to go up by over 8%. So the amount, by my calculation, and all of this, particularly on the revenue side, are estimates at this point, so this is all subject to change, and it could get tweaked, but it's generally correct, and it's comparing apples to apples. So the amount that should need to be raised by taxes really is, by my calculations, projected to go up by about 4%, and by my calculations, that'll be about 40 cents per thousand on the tax rate.
And that's too much.
And that is an opinion that you're allowed to have. Okay, thank you. The other thing that I will point out is that if you decide that you are not happy with this number, I would ask, what is it that you want the town to stop doing? Because this money funds, for the most part, town operations, and if we want to make significant cuts, we need to decide what we're not going to spend money on. So, like I said, if, I'm going to stop now because I think I've talked enough. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Questions and comments? Yes, ma'am?
So my name is Cheryl Szeszki, I'm from River Road, Bristol. I noticed in going through some of the line items that it looks like the welfare administration is decimated, and also the forestry line is totally out, I guess, and I just question, what is the, what's replacing those, or what was the reason for eliminating both of those areas?
So welfare administration, we are still continuing to administer the welfare provided by the town, there was a change in how that is being staffed. So rather than being a separate job in that, it's now included in the job responsibilities for one of the town employees who's in the executive department. So that work is still happening, and it's still funded, it's just funded in a different part of the budget. I would say kind of the same thing for the forestry. There's a desire by, to basically, the forestry work is done by the fire department, so rather than having that be a separate budget, that work is being accounted for in lines in the fire department. Does that answer your question?
Yes, yes. And I also had a question on the document. For example, under the financial administration, on the line 4150395, under contract services, the 2024 budget is, was zero, and then the Budget Committee for this year is putting it at $2,000. And then the percent increase from zero to 2,000 is listed at zero, and is that correct? Or how's that being figured?
So you're looking at line 396 in financial administration, is that correct? No, no.
Well, 395, 395. And actually, the same question is for 620 office supplies, where you have, and actually other areas in the budget here, 2024 is zero, and then your 2025 is some amount, either 2,000, 1,000, or in other areas, one area it's up to 43,000, and then the percent increase is showing zero. That doesn't make sense to me, but what is that?
So let me start with a general answer. A general answer is that legally, the budget is a bottom-line budget. So the lines are important things that we go through as the Budget Committee to confirm that it's a reasonable expense, but that the Select Board has the authority to move things around. So I think for line 395, contract services, you're looking, 2024, it was budgeted at zero, and we spent almost $40,000. And the reason for that is that our financial officer resigned, and before we hired the replacement, we contracted for someone to come in and do that work on a contract basis. And then, now that we have a full-time employee doing that work, we don't expect to spend a lot of money, but we're asked to budget $2,000 for that.
Yeah, I'm not questioning that, what I'm questioning is the percent change.
I think the problem is that when we budgeted zero in 2024, that's the denominator in a ratio, so if you actually do the math, the answer is infinity, and the software just calls it zero because you can't put, I can't put an infinity number in the report.
And that's what I figured, but there's nobody correcting that in the budget, and for some of us who are busy, like what I started, is I went down through the percentage to see how much, you know, what went up a lot and went down a lot, and there may be other people here who are using that percentage increase column to do, you know, a quick understanding of the budget without going line by line and column by column. And in fact, there's other areas in this document, one of which the increase went from zero to 43,000, there's another one where it went from zero to 20,000-plus, and the budget increase percentage is showing zero. Well, for people who might be using that column to quickly assess the budget, they're getting inaccurate information, so I'm just...
Okay, I hear what you're saying, and I appreciate that. We use that column on the Budget Committee for the same thing, to look for things that make big change, but then we actually need to go through it line by line and look at it, so we catch, for the most part, we catch that. I guess what I would say is on any individual line, especially small lines, sometimes the percentages can be thrown out. If you look at the bottom line for the department, for financial administration, there's enough information in there that a number is correct. I guess I would say I will take your comment, and we'll try to do better next year, I don't, without going through the budget line by line, I don't know how to, and at this point, we don't have the ability to change those.
Well, if you know that the previous year it was zero, then you know, I mean, you clearly indicated, you understand the math, that the percent is going to be incorrect, and somebody, I would think, could manually go in and correct those dozen lines or so where that's occurring. I mean, there's more than four or five lines that are incorrect.
Okay, thank you for your comment, we'll see what we can do.
Other questions or comments? Tell me you're ready to vote.
Motion to close debate.
I have a motion to close debate. Made by whom?
Sean Leguere.
Sean Leguere, and then seconded by?
Dick Bachelor.
Who was it?
Dick Bachelor.
Dick Bachelor. And, okay, there's a motion to close debate, that means there'll be no further debate. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. You've now closed debate on Article Nine. Article Nine, that is, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the Budget Committee's recommended sum of $9,661,348 for general municipal operations. Everybody understand, if you vote aye, you'll be voting for the article just as it appears in your warrant. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. You've approved Article Nine.
I think maybe the correct language, to restrict...
Restrict reconsideration, sorry.
To restrict reconsideration.
Wrong word, sorry.
Okay. Selectman Hillbronn has moved to restrict reconsideration, is that seconded? Seconded by Rob Glassit, Selectman Glassit. What restricting reconsideration means, that we could not reconsider it during this meeting, okay? It can't be reconsidered, it could be reconsidered, but it would have, we'd have to hold another whole meeting at a later date in order to reconsider. Everybody understand that? Excuse me. All those in favor of restricting reconsideration signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, and you have restricted reconsideration on Article Nine. All those in favor of restricting reconsideration signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it and you have restricted reconsideration on Article Nine.
FYI, the Y finds out, so we lost the screen behind us.
Okay. Excuse me. I apologize. As you can probably tell, I have a cold and I, I'm sorry, it has to be at town meeting time. Article Ten, to see if the town will vote to establish a contingency fund for the current year for unanticipated expenses that may arise and further to raise and appropriate the $25,000 to put in the fund. The sum to come from unassigned fund balance. Any appropriation left in the fund at the end of the year will lapse to the general fund. Is there a motion?
Can I make a motion to move Article Ten as written?
Sluckman Brown moves the article. Is there a second? By Sluckman Sandgren. And would you like to speak to your motion?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good morning, everyone. Carol Brown. I believe most of you understand what this is. This is a fund set aside from the unassigned fund balance where if something occurs during the year that was unanticipated, we have a, a little pot of money to take care of that. It's $25,000. This past year, we spent $8,619.65 and returned $16,383.5 to the general fund. And I guess that's probably enough said. If you have any questions? Thank you.
Questions, comments? Motion to close debate? Rick Alpers moved to close debate. Rosemary Darcy seconded it. Okay. This is a motion to close debate on Article Ten. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. You've closed debate on Article Ten. We're now voting to see if the town will vote to establish contingency fund for the current year for unanticipated expenses that may arise and further to raise and appropriate $25,000 to put in the fund. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, say nay. You've approved Article Ten as it appears in your warrant. Article Eleven, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $25,000 to be added to the Patriotic Recreation and Special Events Expendable Trust Fund established in 2021. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move Article Eleven.
Sluckman Glassit moves Article Eleven, is?
Second.
Seconded by Sluckman Dion. And would you like to address it?
Yes, sir. Okay. So Article Eleven, as you can see over the past few years, this number has gone up fairly significantly. The reason being for that is because we've contracted with a contractor that actually provides more than just the fireworks for us. So this is a far less impact on the town. This contractor actually comes in, brings a barge in, and handles all the logistics of the operation on their own. The cost for the fireworks themselves are $18,500. The rest of the funds in the Warren article are to cover entertainment, vendors, volunteers, and any other associated costs such as having to rent a golf cart or that sort of thing. Over the past few years, we've tried to kind of expand things and, and also provide a better product for what we as taxpayers are putting out there as, for money. We had a fantastic show last year, put on by Pyrotechnico. They're out of the Jaffrey area. They were very easy to work with and we had a great feedback afterwards. Having served on the fireworks committee, one of my things that I've been trying to push, not only as a Select Board member, but as a community member, is to kind of move in a direction back to what we had 10 or 15 years ago with the Friends of the Fourth Committee. The idea behind that would be for the, for the, that committee to raise funds through donation, both from residents and to seek those monies from local businesses to contribute to the fireworks as well. That's going to take time. And we're trying to get the ball rolling on that this year. And the idea of that would be to either offset partially or completely offset this cost to the town, so we as taxpayers are not bearing the burden. The, my, there's, I've had a few community members approach me on this and say, well, the town shouldn't be funding anything. And, and I said, I don't necessarily disagree, but if we are able to get this moving forward and have those monies coming in, I don't, we don't want to see the show end altogether and then never restart up again. So that said, any of you that would like to volunteer for that committee? So I think that's about it. So, yeah. Thank you, Ned.
Comments, questions on Article Eleven? Seeing none?
Close debate.
Excuse me? Yeah, Rick Alpers made a motion to close debate. Is there a second? And who's that up there?
Jackie Glass.
Jackie Glass. Seconded. All those in favor of closing debate on Article Eleven signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, say nay. Yeah, I agree. You've closed debate on Article Eleven, to see if the town will vote and appraise, vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $25,000 to be added to the Patriotic Recreation and Special Events Expendable Trust Fund established in 2021. All those in favor of that signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Ayes have it. And you've adopted the provisions of Article Eleven as they appear in your warrant today. Article Twelve, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $400,000 to be added to the following capital reserve funds previously established. And is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move Article as written.
Moved by Sluckman Millbran and seconded by?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Sluckman Brown. And Sluckman Millbran, do you want to address that?
This article you've seen in the past years, it's to deposit money into several reserve funds so that we can save up for very large purchases, highway trucks, police cruisers, ambulances, not ambulance, sorry, this is a separate fund, and fire trucks, so that we're not taking out loans and spending all kinds of interest on them when we make the purchase. This way, we have the money ahead of time and we're saving tons of interest on it. The town's been very good about this practice. And if you want to see what the current amount in these several funds is, it'd be on page 70 and 71 of this year's annual report. The, the couple other ones that are on here are the accrued wages. That's to fund people retiring or leaving the town so that there's not a huge impact. We have several long-term employees, one recently retired. So the money for leftover vacation and things, and those kinds of expenses come out of the accrued wages fund. The other one of note is the Town Building Maintenance Fund. We keep this at about $50,000, plus or minus, obviously you can't keep. So whatever is used for building maintenance in a previous year, we try to replenish that. And you'll see that it's only 20,000 this year because of expenditures that we made
Questions or comments?
Yeah, John, John Miller, 180 Castle Lane. On the Assessment Reval Capital Reserve Fund, what are the kinds of things that come out of that particular fund? Because it's, I mean, reval is, we basically have somebody that works on it. The capital investment is usually a tangible asset, something that we can actually depreciate. So I'm just curious as to what normally gets paid for out of that fund.
Okay. Somebody have an answer to that question?
I will try to answer the question. This is, every year, the town picks up, we have a, yeah, we have an assessor contracted. And the money for every year for keeping up-to-date records year to year is taken out of this. And also, the state requires every five years that a total value, a revaluation is done. And the money for that is, gets rather expensive. So this, this fund saves up towards that so that we're ready for, for the total revaluation every five years.
All right. So just to clarify then, so it's not so much capital from an accounting rules perspective, it's capital from a, just literally a savings account so that we don't get hit with a giant bill?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. It was, when we said capital, that's kind of why I was thinking, you know, like you, you buy a truck, you say the truck has got a five-year useful life, it's a $100,000 truck, it's $20,000 a year to get to that $100,000 expenditure. Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Okay.
Other questions or comments? Yes, ma'am?
Janet Metcalf, Hall Road. This is a comment. I'm on the Sustainability Committee and I've seen the icicles on the roof of the town hall. So I hope that the Town Building Maintenance Capital Reserve Fund is going to be going at some point to do some energy work on that building. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments?
Paul. Paul, Lake Street, Bristol. I'm usually here every year on, on the capital reserve, but I've learned my lesson. I know that I'm not going to win, but Dawn helped me last year. But I want to call everyone in attendance to the, to the last page on the book. That's where all the magic is happening, when Dawn talks about trying to smooth out the tax rate and tries to, you know, offset large expenses in the future. What I'd like to, what I would have liked to have done, to just take maybe 15 cents out of that so that we could keep this number at $2 per thousand, per thousand on the tax rate? Because right now, I would call this tax creep. We were hanging out well below $2 per thousand. And now we're going to head out to, if you read that bottom line, if you happen to have a magnifying glass, you can see that it's 217, 218, 219. That's creeping. It's telling how much debt we have out there, how much we're setting aside. And, but it's a very important page and it doesn't get any attention, I, I don't think. Oh, it gets a lot of attention from the planning board and Dawn, but I don't know if the general public looks at that page. And I'm going to just walk off stage.
Paul, thank you very much for calling attention to it because I, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank the CIP Committee that Bristol has. And they're the ones that work on, on this plan that, that Paul referred to, it's in your book. And yes, the, the numbers do creep up. We try to keep them down and even. The other portion that sort of makes them creep up is that we can't project what the valuation of the, the total town valuation of property is in the future. We take a stab at it by just increasing the current one every year by a few percent. So those numbers are subject to change as the value, value of properties in the town
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Somebody other than Rick want to make a motion to close debate? John Miller made a motion to close debate. Is there somebody that would like to second that? Bruce Dorn is seconded. Okay, you've made a motion to close debate. This is closing debate on Article Twelve. All those in favor of closing debate signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, say nay. We're now voting on Article Twelve, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $400,000 to be added to the following capital reserve funds. And that's accrued wages capital reserve fund, 25,000. Assessment reval capital reserve fund, 25,000. Fire equipment capital reserve fund, 100,000. Highway equipment capital reserve fund, 160,000. Police vehicle capital reserve fund, 70,000. And town building maintenance capital reserve fund, 20,000. All those in favor of Article Twelve as it appears in your warrant, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, say nay. You've approved Article Twelve as it appears in your warrant. Article Thirteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $125,000 for the purpose of obtaining and placing an emergency generator and responding components at the public safety building. With $125,000 to come from a grant, this appropriation is contingent upon receipt of the grant and if not received, the warrant article will be null and void. No amount of this article to be raised from taxation and shall not impact town's tax rate. And is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move Article Thirteen as written.
Moved by Sluckman Dion and seconded by, by Sluckman Sandgren. And would you like to speak to that?
Am I going to defer to Fire Chief? Hello?
Okay. As I indicated, we do let town department heads speak unless there's some objection. So Chief, the microphone is yours.
Thanks. Ben LaRash, the Fire Chief. So this is, as it says, it's 100% grant funded. We've had projects like this in the past. When we did the Hemp Hill Project, we spent a large amount of money, $75,000 roughly, to build that tower. And then we were able to obtain this grant using the money we already spent as our offset and match. So when we built the public safety building, we knew that we would be seeking grant funding to put an appropriately sized generator there. This is the pathway to do that. So an EMPG grant would fund an appropriately sized generator that will feed the whole building, more than the small generator that we repurposed there. And there won't be any tax money spent, whether we, if we don't get the grant, then we'll just run with what we have currently.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
Yeah, John Miller, again, from 180 Castle Lane. So total cost of ownership, I think sometimes we all are challenged with. And I think when you listen to everybody here, we worry about scope creep. Okay? So I know that from, from this article's perspective, we're saying there's no impact from taxes. But when, let's just say the generator goes in, I, I think we should be able to also consider and understand what the maintenance impact is. So, you know, a normal household generator is 10, 10 to 12,000 dollars and it's cost roughly 250 bucks, 300 bucks a year to maintain it. So if we put in $125,000 generator, we estimating it's about $3,000 a year that gets added to the maintenance line to be able to maintain it. I guess I would like to, when we do things, make sure that we understand what we're actually signing up for. Because it goes to a lot of the other comments around even capital reserves, hey, you know, it's, it's inching up, right? So any estimates as to what we think it would take to maintain the thing? Because if you look at the budget, I think the, the public safety building line item for building maintenance were, went from a dollar to 8,800 this year, rightfully so, right? Because it's a new building, we need to keep it up. If we add three grand to that now, we're at 12. But, so do we have any estimates as to what we think it'll take to maintain this thing?
Does somebody want to answer that question? What, I think the question is, is there a cost of maintaining the generator once it's installed?
So we currently spend just under $1,000 a year to maintain the generator that's there. The estimate that I have is still the same. It's still the same PM cost. It's not significantly larger or a significant difference in, in maintenance cost.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. Other questions or comments? Yep.
Hi there. Becca Woodrow, 36 Pike's Point Road. If we do vote this in, what would we do with the old generator?
Chief?
The plan is that it will go to the Highway Department, and somehow, you know, either back up at the transfer station, the Highway Department, however, that'll work electrically.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Is there a motion to close debate? Herb Darcy moved to close debate, seconded by Dorcas Gordon. All those in favor of closing debate on Article 13 signify by saying aye. And all those opposed say nay. And you'll be now voting on Article 13, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the purpose of obtaining and placing an emergency generator and corresponding components at the public safety building. With one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to come from a grant. All those in favor of Article 13, as it appears in your warrant, signify by saying aye. And all those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, and you've adopted the provisions of Article 13 as they appear in your warrant. Article 14, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two hundred fifty-four thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars for the purpose of hiring up to four full-time permanent firefighters. This amount includes salary and all benefits for six months. The amount of this article is not included in the operating budget under Article 9. And is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 14 as your...
Selectman Brown moves Article 14, is it seconded? Seconded by Rob Selectman Glassett. And would you like to address that?
I defer comments to Chief LaRash again.
You're a popular man.
All right, so this is, this article i- is fairly easy in content. If you had a opportunity to, to watch the PowerPoint that I tried to narrate over and provide as much information as I could, it's straightforward, we're going to hire four permanent firefighter EMS providers. The big component of this is something that has been important for us at the Fire Department and the Select Board for a number of years, as we've talked about how we're going to sustain our EMS program, not only providing the services that we're providing to the town of Bristol, but to the contract towns that produces a, a large amount of revenue that offsets our operating costs. And that is our need to increase staffing to provide these services, but do it in a way that makes sense for the town of Bristol. So this year, the goal was to work with the contract towns, to help them to understand that this is still a huge benefit for them, as well as the town of Bristol, and how do we move it forward? And that the only way we could do that was ensuring that it didn't cost the town of Bristol anything to add these positions. And that's what the contracts provide for this year. It increases our staffing to three firefighter EMS providers on each shift, so that will be three employees 24/7. That cost, which is, we need to hire four in order to do it, the way our shift scheduling works, 100% of that cost is being paid for by the contract towns. So this two-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand dollars is the cost for the first six months, that's all we can budget for this year, between hiring, getting the employees placed and onboard, and then moving forward, the contracts will reflect the full cost annually for that. So I'm sure there's a number of questions. I think the big take-home is, is that this is the thing that the town of Bristol needs to do, to approve the hiring of these employees, but that again, 100% of this new cost to the Fire Department budget will be offset by revenue from the contract towns of Hill, Alexandria, and Danbury. And I'm happy to answer questions, but that's the kind of big crux of it, I think.
Questions, comments?
Okay, Paul Manganello, Lake Street, Bristol. The fact that it's going to all, all be offset by the cost of the contract. What are we currently making on the contract? Because, as I recollect over the years, it was about a 60% split of the cost of operating the Fire Department, and the EMS service was actually paid for by the ambulance contract. So we, are we suggesting that, let's say it's six-hundred thousand dollars of the operating, and I'm just spitballing here, let's say it's five-hundred, six-hundred thousand dollars of the cost of operating the Fire Department is recovered by the ambulance service? So all of a sudden, that would make the chief's equation work out, to say, yeah, it would be totally absorbed by the Fire Department, I mean by the contract service, the five-hundred thousand. But if, what is it over and above that we're offering? Are we getting a better number for our services? Because we're sitting here in a readiness to serve, so we're, we're always there, and we're going to answer not only the donor towns, but Mutual Aid's going to send us to Hebron and Bridgewater and elsewhere, and I'm just curious, what do we, what percentage of the, of this offsetting revenue is going to actually be recovered for the, these employees?
Who can answer that question?
So I can try. Sorry, Paul. So the system, as it currently works, takes the Fire Department budget approximately, there's some exclusions, and says, what's the percentage of our call volume is EMS, which is somewhere in the neighborhood of 70 to 75%, dependent on the year. We take that number and then disperse it based on usage, there's a population factor, whatnot. How that looks, so let's back up to, say, last year, when we don't have these additional employees, between billing revenue and the, the subsidies that the town pays to us, Alexandria, Danbury, and Hill, that's approximately four hundred thousand, it's a little bit more than four hundred thousand dollars. But that four hundred thousand dollars is what we get from those contract towns currently to support the 1.4 to 1.5 million dollar budget, dependent on the year, for the Fire Department, which is largely EMS. This, adding these three, four people, adding these four people a third to each shift, the cost for six months is two-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand dollars. What we are getting for revenue is two-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand dollars. So they're still paying that X dollars, whether it's, you know, roughly a hundred, hundred-something thousand that Alexandria pays for their base EMS, and then, you know, roughly sixty thousand dollars, Danbury pays roughly sixty thousand dollars, Hill, Hill pays. Add eighty-five, rough numbers, eighty-five thousand dollars to that, that's what they're paying this year. So two-hundred-and-five thousand, a hundred-and-forty-something, a hundred-and-thirty-something. Next year, this number will go up roughly, because we don't know what the exact numbers will be, to, two-hundred-and-eighty, and roughly two-hundred thousand dollars apiece for the other towns. So again, 100% of this new cost gets paid for, the other costs still live within the, the base EMS formula structure.
Have a follow-up question, Paul?
Yes, I do. Okay, so we've just gone through all the capital reserves, and we put aside money for an ambulance. And we, and we suggest that that's covered under that same service contract, that we're going out there and we're, we're providing that service and we're recovering the cost of that service, we're using the cost of that recovery for that service to pay for our ambulance. So now we're paying for the ambulance, we're paying for readiness to serve for these adjacent communities, and we're eating a lot into this 50 or 60%. We've somewhat enjoyed paying half price for our full-time Fire Department, but we're not going to be paying half price anymore if we start adding employees and then also taking money out of the fund for the ambulance every five, a couple hundred thousand dollars so that we, or a hundred thousand or so, so we can reach the, recover the new ambulance every five or six years. So there's one more thing in there.
Thank you. I think Mr. Miller was here first, and then I'll call upon you.
It's all good. I actually, so, number one, Chief, I wanted to say thank you for putting together the, the narrated PowerPoint. It definitely answered a lot of questions for me. What's that? So, so, you know, that was actually, I think, really helpful to try to go through some of those base numbers. But I think Paul's point is, is sort of spot-on. When we look at this from a six-month perspective, so we're basically saying, adding four people, this should be a offset even as we get into next year. Because I think you, in the narration, you talked about July, I think, as well, in what you said earlier. So it's, we're thinking about, it's July through the end of the year, I just want to make sure I got that correct. And then next year, obviously, this will be in our budget, with the offset coming really from the other towns of roughly just five-hundred thousand dollars in contracts, is what our expectation would be as we go into next year. Is that right? Just trying to make sure I got it right.
Yes.
Okay.
Don? Just to make a point of clarification on some of the things that Paul said, to purchase ambulances, that, that has nothing to do with the article that we just, that we just passed. The ambulances are bought under a separate revolving fund, and that is funded sixty thousand dollars a year out of the, the money from the contract funds. From the, from the revenues of the ambulance. Yeah.
So we, we've talked a lot about the funding, where that's coming from, and how it's covered. I just kind of want to fill everybody in on the benefit that this is to the town of Bristol. In a perfect world, the Bristol Fire Department provides fire and EMS coverage for the town of Bristol, and we don't have to worry about our neighbors relying on us for coverage and how we're going to fund that, and whether or not that's a benefit. At the current, at the current staffing level, there's times where an ambulance may go to Danbury, transport to Dartmouth Hospital, and be out of service for anywhere from two and a half to three hours. What this does is this virtually guarantees that if one of you folks has someone at your house and they have a heart attack, and that ambulance is in Danbury, that there's going to be a second ambulance available to the residents of Bristol, which is our primary concern. And that's why I would encourage you to vote for this article.
Yes, sir. Eddie Richards, King Arthur Lane. Chief, could you explain to me what the contracting services comprise of? In other words, the monies that we're receiving from the other town, what's, is there a fixed bill, or is it based on calls?
So currently, the way the EMS programs worked for a number of years now is, like I said before, we take a look at all the expenditures throughout the year, we apply a percentage number, which is our EMS cost, and then it gets distributed in what's referred to as a blended computation. So a number of years ago, we moved to charging the contract towns largely based on usage, which is how we had always done it, but then also as a function of, of the population of the whole. So population isn't a great indicator on how many calls that there's going to be, or how much need that there's going to be, but what including that population number does is kind of, it presents a risk factor number, really a base cost, that if for some reason be really logical to happen, but Hill had no calls next year, there would still be a charge for that service because of our readiness, and that's what that population factor does. So right now, it's, again, it's largely based on usage, there's a small percentage of population, that's how all the costs break down, if that answered your question.
Just trying to understand it a little bit better, to see that we're putting all the skin in the game, and I wanted to see how that was appraised across the towns. It seems to me, these other towns are getting the benefit of our service at really low to no cost. To me, it should be some kind of a fixed cost should be put on these towns, so that they have skin in the game. And then we can understand that we're going to be getting covered for what we're putting into the, into the cost. It seems to me that, you know, it goes back to this, we're going to take, we're going to be taking care of all the surrounding towns, we're the hub. And this is what always irked me from day one. Bristol should be taking care of Bristol. I don't want to sound selfish, but there should be, on these other towns, they got to understand, and we talk to a lot of people that live in these other towns, they are loving it, because it's, we, Bristol, is picking up the tab. It's time we take a look in how we can assess these other towns and do it across the board, so we have a fixed cost to start with, and then anything other than that gets added. Thank you.
Any, any other comments?
Yes.
Boke?
Thank you. When you get thirty like this, trying to say something, well, this stuff, yeah, things happen to you.
I like this one, God is great, the beer is good, and people are crazy. But anyways...
Got to, got to introduce yourself.
That's, oh, not me. Boke Morrison, 92739. Okay, just a young pup. But anyways, this year's been going on forever and ever, and man, I didn't think we had a man like that, that just got through. We are the hub. We do take care of all the other towns. We've been doing this forever. But a Fire Department, the chief, I don't believe the stuff that I see this year, as far as I know, I think it's going to cost us almost a half a million dollars to do that move, probably within 10 years. We built a fire station before, it lasted 15 years, with very little problems. We just built a brand-new fire station. I don't know if they get their equipment, I don't know if they quick enough, if ever they catch on fire. But we are going backwards. And all I can say is that on this part, a lot of you people are here, but you know, you're booting yourself right out of your own house. Few people are going with this budget committee, the Selectmen, they are putting us right out of your house, and look at all the percentage. These people that's getting eighty thousand dollars a year, getting 7% raises, and they don't even live in Bristol. This is all wrong. You are way over budget, power's gone concerned, and I hope you people will look around just a little bit, hope somebody will get up and ask for a 10% discount on the whole budget and be about, just about right. But you're pricing yourself right out, and Bristol is the hub, and we're taking care of all these towns for free. And we've been doing it for a long time. I don't think I'm going to get up again, but thank you, but you people are booting yourself right out of your house.
Thank you, Boke. Yeah, I'm sorry, didn't see you, Joe.
Joe Kerst, the 30 Chestnut Street. I just wanted to make the point, I know the, the notion of the mutual aid and the additional services we provide to the, the other towns that surround us has been a, a topic that's come up multiple times in prior town meetings, and I just wanted to say that I think this Article 14 is actually the largest step towards those concerns that we've been able to bring forward in a long time. So the fact that the chief has been able to negotiate the contracts so that these other towns are 100% paying for these new employees, that is, in my opinion, the, the largest shift towards getting these other towns to pay more towards Bristol than the services we offer than any other, you know, town meeting that I've been to. So I just wanted to make that point and thank the chief. I think this is a step in the direction that, in alignment with a lot of the concerns that have been raised over the years.
Susan?
Susan Duncan, Cedar Street. I'm sitting here puzzling with what we're dealing with at the school level, where we've lost towns. What happens if Hill or whoever decides, I don't want to pay this? Do we have a, a commitment that they will be part of this? Are we buying into it, and we're going to own it 100% for Bristol, and we don't need that much service?
Does somebody want to address that? What, what happens if a town decides they don't want to participate? to participate?
So, this question has come up. Again, I tried to answer it a little bit in that video, but I'll try now. So, obviously, this year, the big question is, right, it starts here. Do we approve of this or not? And then, obviously, through the various town meetings, whether they fund it, the boards of selectmen have already approved the contracts. So, should they not get funding? This year, it's relatively simple. We would renegotiate. We would say, hey, we could only get two towns on board. Maybe we're only hiring two firemen, or whatever. Or none of the towns support it funding-wise, then we don't hire anybody, and we continue with the status quo and look at the future in a different light. I think, down the road, the contracts are on an annual basis. I know that some people have concern with that. I never have loved that they're on an annual basis, mostly because I know what part of my job is every year, which is to reevaluate, rebuild the contracts, and put them in front of those boards, and our board. So, it's year to year. If, a year from now, you know, two years from now, let's say, everybody funds this, you guys approve it today, and we've hired these individuals to satisfy the contract, and two or three years from now, Hill or Alexandria at Danbury backs out, that would be a discussion at the board level that the board, probably in all likelihood, would decide, "We're going to decrease staffing because we now don't have this revenue coming in." That's probably the best answer I can give. There's maybe a bunch of factors. Maybe there's a bunch of stuff that changes in three years. But I think that's the easiest answer to say. If there wasn't revenue to fund it, then we would, you know, terminate employment, or, you know, however we shift those employees to make it work and make it continue to be revenue-neutral.
David Shirley, Peak Hill Road. So, I'm curious. My question is, why does the article not include a contingency if the other towns don't provide funding?
Can we say that again?
The question was, he asked why the article doesn't include a contingency if the other towns don't provide funding. And is there somebody who can answer that question?
Be good.
I guess it is what it is.
So, one thing I will say is that the Warren article is somewhat open-ended, as far as, if you read the verbiage, it says "up to" for firefighters. So, and I think the original intent with that is, we weren't sure if all three towns would sign on to this. So, if all, if, basically, the, I'm asking you to put your trust in the board, that the board would make the decision not to hire anyone if that wasn't funded, and if it's not funded, that the budget won't increase due to the increase in staffing.
Any other questions or comments?
I heard this one guy say, "If the ambulance goes to Hanover or all these other places of a sick person, probably from another town, what ambulance do we get? Have we got one that is going to be equal to that one that leaves this town that we paid $400,000 for? Are we going to get one probably for $100,000 if they can find it?" That's just my opinion here. But anyway, the other part, I hope you people vote this down. This town does not need that many more firemen in there, and plus, I guess I want to say, PJs. I think they'd be waking people up to get up, "We've got a fire." I don't know what they do to that many people when we don't have fires over there. What do they have to do?
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good morning. My name's Nate Juret, from 200 Crescent Street. It's my first one of these. It's fun. I've been in Bristol three years, my wife ten. Thank you. So, this is interesting. I work for a municipality. I manage a sewer department, large. And so, I guess an analogy I have is, so I'm in Laconia. All of our sewer goes to the Winnipeg River Basin and Franklin, okay, which is, in this case, the plant. And so, I'm viewing, I know we're talking about for staff, but I think this is a bigger picture. So, like, Winnipeg River Basin gets sewer from Meredith, Center Harbor, Laconia, Tilton, Franklin, Belmont, Northfield, Guilford. But everyone has a part ownership in that plant, based on usage. So, when something breaks, or you need a new pump station, everyone contributes. I think that was an interesting point, where if we get a second ambulance, it's great so that when it's elsewhere, we have a second one. But we're fronting the bill on all that capital cost. There should be, I think this is a great idea. I think it's too soon. I think there needs to be some capital investment from these communities, surrounding towns, first, to buy into the capital plant, fire station here, and put monies aside for those purchases, because it does feel like we are fronting the bill, because we are, right? So, I think the executive office has a nice budget for this year. They've got some staff, some extra hours. This is something that would typically fall under that department to figure out and work with the other communities, and that's what I would like to see. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
David Marshall, Green Street. Reading the article, it says, "Four full-time, permanent firefighters." But then, I hear about ambulances taking sick people. Well, firefighters have a particular skill set that they're trained in, as do folks that man the ambulances, be it EMS, paramedic, things to that nature. So, my question is, it says, "Permanent firefighters." But if they're going to be staffing an ambulance with these personnel, does this figure include training or certifications in order to provide that EMS or paramedic level of skill?
If you want to answer that.
So, all of our permanent firefighters, and the use of permanent firefighters is, it's relative to, that's what the RSA refers to, full-time firefighters in the state of New Hampshire. Largely, permanent firefighters in the state of New Hampshire. Probably, every single one of them has an EMS certification. We don't hire anybody into a full-time capacity without an EMS certification. That's not to say that we wouldn't require training up to, say, the advanced EMT level. We typically have not paid for paramedic-level training in the town in the past. So, we would hire potentially EMS providers that would then have to become advanced EMTs, which is in the budget. That's why there's an overtime component of the $254,000, not because I expect that newly hired employees are going to take a bunch of vacation time, but because we're going to potentially send them out to trainings, and I wanted to make sure that that number is covered within this, again, to remain revenue-neutral. So, permanent firefighters is kind of the nomenclature for RSA purposes, and how kind of the greater system works. But they'll all be firefighter EMS providers.
Just wanted to address, the gentleman from Crescent Street brings up a good point about capital investment. And I just want to clarify that, in that those towns are already making a capital investment indirectly by the revenue that we're already generating through our billing for the service that we provide. So, every time we transport a patient, we receive, I can't remember what the exact percentage is, but it's the lion's share of the revenue from that transport. Out of town comes back to the town of Bristol. One other point that I wanted to make is, this also ensures that we don't have to rely on a mutual aid ambulance coming in to assist us when that first ambulance is out of town. And when that happens, not only do we receive, or do you get an ambulance that provides not necessarily as high a standard of care as you're going to get from an ambulance in our own town, but the town's also losing out on that revenue. So, to give an example, like I said before, that ambulance is out of town transporting a patient to Dartmouth, which transports to Dartmouth and Concord are increasing greatly, just due to the way that our EMS system works these days. But if that ambulance is in Dartmouth, and no call members are around on a, you know, Saturday afternoon to man that second ambulance, and that goes to, you know, five, eight minutes, they automatically call New Hampton or Bridgewater. That Bridgewater ambulance comes in, and they get all the revenue from the transport of that patient. This is going to virtually eliminate that. So, again, I ask you to please support this article.
Paul, were you waiting to talk, or you?
I'm going to wait a minute.
Timing is everything. Bill?
Hi. Bill Neiman, Redbone Drive. Let me start just by expressing my gratitude to the chief for his knowledge and his ability to articulate clearly to us what this is about. Let me also express my gratitude to the gentleman who was born in 1939 for his passion. And I find that to be something very important, and I've enjoyed that. I really think this is not so, and, oh, one other person. The selectman that pointed out that you might have a time when we have an ambulance off at Dartmouth Hitchcock, and somebody else in Bristol has a need, and we need that other ambulance and those other trained personnel to take care of a person in a situation here. A couple of months ago, I was lying flat on my back in the bathroom, and I was quite ill. The room was dizzy. I was dizzy. The room was spinning. My wife was trying to help me. She couldn't. We made a call. EMS showed up. Before I knew it, I was looking up at the kind faces of two EMS people and a police officer. And with their expertise, with their engaging personalities and their friendliness, they got me up. They got me in an ambulance. They got me over to Spear. I was there for, I think, three days. I don't want to say they saved my life, but it came close. This is an issue to me, not about reciprocity, which I hear a lot about. It's about real need. And again, I appreciate the selectman who pointed that out. I've heard too much in the past few days about reciprocity at the national level. If you really want to get it from these people, maybe you ought to think, the people from Hill, Alexandria, Danbury, maybe you ought to set a tariff on them.
Let's not get into national politics here today. Tom?
Tom Caldwell, Summer Street. In listening to this, I was hearing, I think it was 70% of the calls are EMS calls that the fire department receives. I'm curious whether it's necessary to require the firefighter portion and just hire EMTs that don't require as much training. Would that be less expensive and still get the job done? It's just, it seems that we're requiring overqualification for people on the ambulance.
Do you want to address that?
So, part of the problem, what? You can't hear me? It seemed loud. It seemed loud to me. So, yeah, we could hire EMTs. One of the problems when you hire EMTs, if your goal is to increase your 24/7 coverage, is you need to hire more EMTs than you would have do firemen. It's the way labor laws work. I can't explain it. I would love for FLSA to change the 7K exemption to include EMS providers, but it doesn't. It includes permanent firefighters. And what that allows is, our firefighters work a 48-hour shift schedule, so they work 48 hours a week. That 48 hours a week is all regular rate, straight time. That's allowed by FLSA, and the town doesn't have to pay overtime until it exceeds that number. That's what they've decided to do, and so, that's what we do. You cannot do that with EMS providers. So, you would think that, okay, well, an EMS provider is only an EMS provider, so they're going to be less expensive, and that's just not true. We're fine, and typically, what we're paying for career firefighter EMTs is less hour per hour than what private EMS or municipal EMS providers are making. Part of that is because of the Group II benefits. You know, people will take on, "I'll be a firefighter EMT or firefighter paramedic somewhere for maybe a little less than hour, but it allows me to get into this retirement benefit." So, it seems less expensive. It's really not. You've got to, again, in order to do this, we're hiring three, four. You probably have to hire somewhere in the neighborhood of six providers to do the same work. So, it all, it costs you the same in the long run, and instead of having an additional firefighter on that shift, you would just have an EMS provider. So, if you're going to spend the same amount of money, we might as well get the most impact, which is to have a firefighter EMS provider.
Yes, Becca?
Why are you waiting in line? I don't think that's fair to others.
He couldn't decide whether he wants to speak or not, I think. I think he's holding back, so.
My neighbor, he's polite. Beckham Road, 36 Pike's Point Road. Just a question. How many times have we run into the problem of our ambulance going to Dartmouth? We have a call in Bristol, and we have nobody on call to come. How many times has that happened? And a follow-up on that, if Bridgewater goes out, and their ambulance is gone, do they ever call us to cover them? Is that reciprocal? I mean, we go and help them. I'm just wondering, how many times has it ever happened where we're out, and we have a call in Bristol, nobody comes to get an ambulance? I mean, we have a call department. I'm just wondering.
You had...
I just think, no offense, you're trying to make people nervous. You're saying, "Well, the ambulance is gone, and nobody's going to come help you. Somebody's going to come help you."
Is that intended to be questions, or was that comment?
The question was, how many times has it happened that we have not been able to service?
Let me answer that, chief. The question, in case you didn't hear, was whether, how many times does it occur that we have an ambulance out, and we need coverage in town, I think?
Sure. So, the exact numbers of how many times New Hampton or Bridgewater came into town last year, or over the last couple of years, I don't have offhand. Typically, New Hampton will come into town, I think it's, the average is about two dozen times a year. Some of that is area. We, you know, River Road calls or something, New Hampton will start automatic on, just because they're closer, and it ensures that somebody gets there quickly. So, there's probably total between calling for Bridgewater, or on occasion, Meredith EMS, or New Hampton. It's probably about, total about two dozen times a year that nobody responds. I think the real key component is, is that this kind of, this does two things. It ensures that somebody's there at the station, ready to go, so there's no delay in that response. And it also takes advantage of, yes, we do have a call department. That call department isn't as robust as it used to be. People have, you know, their lives have changed. People have, you know, their lives have changed, they've gotten different jobs, they've had families, they've got other commitments. And so what we're seeing routinely on additional EMS calls is that we get roughly, if you watched my presentation, we get about .7 people to respond to those second EMS calls or third EMS calls. That tells me that the majority of time, we get one call member or off-duty employee to respond. What this means is that there's going to be another person there that they can then team up with, because you've got to have two on an ambulance, and that ambulance can get out significantly faster and in better position than waiting for New Hampton, or Bridgewater, or Meredith, or Franklin, or whomever we have to call.
Okay, about ready to wrap this up? Oh, Paul, you want to speak? Go ahead, Paul.
Paul Mayall, Lake Street, Bristol. I want to call your attention to page 67 in your handout, and the, and the, how the tax rate is established. And you'll note this year, for the first time that I can find, and I've looked at all of the old town meeting books, or I went back to quite a few years, how much was, how much was allocated from the Select Board of Engraved Fund balance to reduce taxes? $500,000 allowed us to be less than the school tax, which was the opposite last year. So that's a good idea of how much it's going to cost for four firefighters. A half a million dollars, that's 87 cents on the taxes, if you do the math, 567 million. That means every 567,000 is $1 on the tax rate, so it's approximately 87 cents is what's going to happen. And I'm not sure where we're going to find $500,000 to keep the tax rate in check. So, I was waiting for the end because, only because I want to request a ballot vote on this. And I knew I was going to be unpopular with that, but I was.
What'd you say again?
Well, I don't know when to inject that.
Right, no, I'll, you've requested, and I'll check on, before we vote.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Ann?
My name is Ann Dunn. I'm on Picket Hill Road. I was, I was laughing at the birth date. Mine is June of 39. I have had reason in the last five years to call for an ambulance for myself and for my husband, who has now been deceased. This is the right place for us to be asking questions. I am concerned that when we are given answers to our questions, or more information because of our questions, are we taking that information into account when we go ahead to make a decision for our own personal vote? Or have we already decided our personal vote before the questions, before the discussion, and before the information given? Our chief, this is what he does, and his contracts and the information that he's given to us about the, the contracts and the salary, and the reasons for this decision about asking for permanent firefighters who are also EMTs. That information, he has tried to disseminate before this meeting. He has also answered the questions about it. I'm just concerned that when we come to this meeting, are we actually taking in the answers to, to the questions that are being provided? So, this kind of, this is a very small representation, and we are going to make a decision that affects everyone who lives in Bristol. It certainly affected me within the last five years. And I, because I live on Picket Hill Road, sometimes the New Hampton ambulance does get to my house before the Bristol ambulance. Sometimes I have two in the driveway before they decide which one is going to transport me to some, which hospital. But I, I just, I just feel as though, because this has touched me, and because I am very grateful for the people who serve, our taxes pay for the services we want, as well as the services we need. And if, if we want or need services, we should be willing to pay for them.
Thank you, Ann. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Dave Greenwood, Hemlock Brook Road. I want to thank the chief. This, to me, looks more like we're going to have our towns that we support absorb the cost of this increased service for System One, System Two, EMT response, which will benefit EMT heading into another town, another on backup in town, but I think it also benefits if there's a call out in Bristol, there's a second ambulance for a second call in Bristol. And that, to me, sounds like a good deal, to have the other towns absorb a secondary backup service for the residents of Bristol. Thank you very much, and I support this article.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. And before you speak, just, if you want to speak, you probably should come to the mics, because we're going to close debate soon, so.
Jackie Glassett, Oak Crest Road. I just wanted to give the insight, as the wife of a firefighter, I can remember date nights turning into the, sitting in the parking lot entertaining myself because he's on a call, or the pager going off 100 times in the night and he's on a call, and they're calling for a second call because the guys are out. I can tell you, they're not just sitting around twiddling their thumbs. They are busy, they are working hard, and sometimes they just need help, and we need to support them so they have the help they need.
Thank you.
Mary Gebhardt, Hall Road. My daughter is a paramedic, and today's her day off, but because it's her day off, she volunteered to cover at Hampton. I just, I can't thank all of you enough for the service that you provide. And she said, within the community she works in, she works at Stewart, Wolfboro, all over the place, that Bristol has one of the very best ambulance service crews that she's ever worked with, and that it was a pleasure. So I just want to support them and vote yes on this article. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Hi, Nate Juret again, from Crescent Street. I'll be brief. So, I love the idea, I love the idea of sharing costs with other communities, but I think if we didn't have these intermunicipal agreements with other communities, we wouldn't need a second ambulance. So therefore, why are we paying for the full cost of, of that ambulance? I guess is, is my question. I think I personally would support it more if that ambulance was being, if like, in the presentation, there was, hey, you know, it's 200,000 from Bristol, this community's putting in 100,000. If it was shown that way, I would personally feel different about it. Thank you.
Okay, is there a mo?
Motion to close debate.
Yeah. Hold on, I haven't taken the motion yet. Go ahead.
I, I just want to clarify, so we already have two, we actually have three ambulances, so we're not purchasing another ambulance. I just want to clarify that for everyone. This is strictly to, to hire the firefighters and not purchase more equipment.
Wendy Kostkin moved to close debate, and seconded by whom?
Jackie Glassett.
Jackie Glassett. So you mean, closing debate on Article 14. All those in favor of closing debate signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, say nay. We, before we vote on Article 14, there was a motion to have a ballot vote, and there need to be a sufficient number of people here who wish to have a ballot vote, so. Huh?
Seven people need to stand.
Seven people stand, they can have a ballot vote. Yep. Okay, I need seven people who wish to have a ballot vote. Okay, we're going to have a ballot vote. Okay, hold on. Don't, don't move yet. Except for, except for the supervisor.
You've got to take a walk.
Okay, so, we're going to have a ballot vote. We're going to use a newfound green ballot. And it's not quite newfound green, but it's green, and it's close to St. Patrick's Day. Very important, the thing that you need to know. On, you're going to see on the ballot, there's two boxes, one is a yes box and one is a no box. Extremely important that you actually mark a, one of the boxes, yes or no. Do not tear this up and then put it in the ballot box. Put the whole thing in the ballot box, just mark yes or no. And the reason for that is because there have been other circumstances where towns have just used the tear one side or the other, and they've ended up with more ballots than they have people voting. And, and that would negate, negate the vote, and they'd have to have another meeting. So we don't want to do that. So, very important. Mark the whole ballot, put the whole ballot in the ballot box.
No.
Oh. So, and what you're going to be voting on is Article 14, and it's been unamended. So what you're going to be voting on is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 254,000, 6, 254,416 dollars for the purpose of hiring up to four full-time permanent firefighters. This amount includes the salary and all benefits for six months. The amount of this article is not included in the operating budget under Article Nine. So everybody understands, so if you check yes on your ballot, you'll be voting to, to, for that article, just as it appears in your warrant. If you vote no, you'll be voting against it. Everybody understand?
Yeah.
Okay? The polls will be open, and they do not have to be open for any particular amount of time in this case. So, as soon as everybody's had the opportunity to vote, we're going to close the polls, okay? So you need to get out there and vote. Thank you. And we'll reconvene as soon as everybody's had that opportunity. I didn't realize that. We've always, we've always said that it had to be seven.
Hey, Tom, how you doing here?
I am, I'm on my way to the office.
That's exactly right.
Hey, Tom, Hawaii.
This is this year.
DPW.
Yep.
I thought of it after. And we should have showed Ben's presentation. Have you watched it?
It's on YouTube.
So you get, even if you subscribe to the Priscilla Buzz, you get that newsletter?
I have.
So go, if you go on the town website, there's, I think, once you go on the website, it's got to be on the homepage, but just check out, just search, must be a search bar, search Priscilla Buzz, and it's a newsletter that we put out. So there's email. So, and it goes out, weekly.
So if you have email, you, they'll automatically give you a description.
Sign up for it, and then every week, they put out, they put out current events, any information, like this video, Ben's video. It's also on YouTube. Yeah, if you want to get, it's like a premiere video. Everything I've been through. We should have shown Ben's presentation. It would have been informative, and it would have saved, well, it might, it might have saved. Yeah. Yeah, right.
Wait, we're already here? Going to pass or no?
750 bucks, it's done.
Oh, no kidding? It wasn't enough to buy pay that.
I'll go half of it if you want.
No, I already paid for it. Let's see what they say. Supposedly he had enough money for all of it.
That's all 50 is.
What's that?
That's all 50 is dedicated to, is just the American.
50, or it isn't on the ballot or anything? Fifty, or it isn't on the ballot or anything? Folks, how are you?
I'm gonna watch the circles. Mr. Morrison, Joanne Bailey.
Joanne, how you doing?
Doing well, how are you?
Thank you.
My dad asks, uh, this is my husband Chuck.
How you doing? Good, good.
My dad asks how you are.
Yeah?
Yeah.
I gotta keep, um, keep on my stock there, but you know, I don't get around to talking.
Yeah.
They, they sure me getting to their house up all night.
Well, I actually did fall at his house delivering his paper one morning. Yeah, I told him, I said, you know, it's a good thing I know who you are, otherwise I'd sue you. But I guess Jim, Jim and Lynn are gonna be going on vacation with Ray.
Oh, they're gonna, uh, on, oh, they're gonna go, what?
On that, on her boat, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yep, so, anyways.
They, they got money, so what's up doing?
Good seeing you.
Nice seeing you.
Try getting Tyson.
Hi folks, how are you?
Yeah.
No. He's getting an acrylic plaque.
Yeah, the old boys had much freedom in the past.
Oh, is that right? I've been out too much, okay.
Now, by your house Sunday, Monday. It's a little worse. And now I'm going to the foreign end.
I'm gonna get the wow.
But it is, I did.
They don't fully stay in town at that time. I couldn't find him a little one, two hours. He finally showed up. I tell you, I tell you, gonna phone him.
Oh my God. How many you getting asked on dates? How you doing, bro? Why, thank you. I'm not walking that good, but I feel all good. You are lucky if they're walking now. They're moving to you, and you really freak the shit out of them. Oh, yeah. I got one, I had one. One, two hits. And I hit, I hit them the first time, and I have my own problem. Hey, hey, show me how. No, no. But if I don't work, I don't know, I don't know. I walk it, I mean, I don't have a doing.
What do you neighbor? How are you looking very? Thank you. You look very geographic today.
Jesus, both, you're awfully, you're quiet today.
Hey, didn't I do good?
You can't, you can't. What's, what's, what's the problem?
I spent over two years. And I would go along that if you guys would get out. You guys don't care. I'm trying to stay in my way, but when you're, you're like, you went along with too much.
Yeah, I didn't even think of that. It does come full term, each other. So, good to see you though.
Nice seeing you.
Wyoming. Card Morrison.
Has, has everybody voted who wishes to vote? Seeing no further voters, I declare the polls closed.
Oh, is that right? Oh, we have the remote control here. Oh, okay, yes, I'm gonna have, right on. But have you done it yet?
All right, yeah.
He didn't tell you, he went from. I saw.
Sticky bits. Hold all some. Depends where you go.
Results of your vote on Article 14. There were one hundred and twenty-two ballots cast. Eighty votes in the affirmative. Thirty-one votes in the negative. And one person couldn't decide, they didn't mark either yes or no. You've approved Article 14 as it appears in your warrant. Article 15, to see if the town will vote to establish a cemetery maintenance expendable trust fund pursuant to RSA 3119A and RSA 2892A. Allowing all future proceeds received from the sale of cemetery lots in the town of Bristol Cemeteries and any interest gained thereon for the maintenance of cemeteries. And to raise and appropriate the sum of $2,025 to put in said fund. The amount of this appropriation is to coincide with the amount received from the sale of two lots in 2024. This cost item shall be funded from the unassigned fund balance and no amount to be raised by taxation, which shall not impact the town's tax rate. The town's cemetery trustees shall be named as agents to expend from this fund. And is there a motion?
Second.
Moved by Selectman Sandigan, seconded by Selectman Millbrand. And would you like to speak to that?
So every year, we budget costs for the cemeteries and stuff. And this year, we sold two lots. And we'd like to create a trust to deposit the money in and have these funds for maintenance down the road. That's per hour, say.
Questions or comments? A motion to close debate. Paul Manganella moved to close debate. And who? I want to get somebody else who hasn't already been in the minutes. Who is that up there? Martha Alman. So there's been a motion to close debate on Article 15. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed say nay. You're now voting on Article 15 as it appears in the warrant. I'll avoid having to read it again. Okay? All those in favor of Article 15 as it appears in your warrant, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed say nay. You've adopted the provisions of Article 15 as they appear in your warrant. Article 16, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $25,000 for the purpose of purchasing replacement firearms for the Bristol Police Department. Is there a motion?
I move the article as written.
Moved by Selectman Millbrand and seconded by? Who is it?
Elizabeth Miller.
Elizabeth Miller seconded the motion. All those? And would you like to speak to your motion?
I'll give her a few key points.
The existing weapons that will be replaced would be fourteen handguns, fourteen holsters, extra magazines, and also one to three rifles, depending on the amount of funding available in the price. If there's any questions, I can't speak to that very much, but I'll defer to Lieutenant Woodward, who I believe is here.
Lieutenant Woodward, would you like to address it? Give us a better explanation?
Yeah, Tim Woodward from Bristol PD. So we've had the weapons, the handguns, for about seven years, coming up on eight. We typically try and replace them.
You gotta get closer to the microphone.
We typically try and replace them every seven to eight years. We're coming up at that mark now, at seven years, to replace the handguns. The new handguns have red dot optics on top, which we haven't had previously, so it'd be a nice improvement. Because of that, we need to replace the holsters, the magazines accompanying with it.
I picked up "popular word," and I'm right behind you.
The rifles that we have are old. We've got them from, it's called the 1033 program. It's a surplus from the military that we were given probably twenty-plus years ago, so we're trying to replace a few of those as well.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Yes, ma'am.
Cheryl Sazaski, Riverwood. I just have questions. The, um... I certainly support the police department. My question is why? I noticed in the budget for the budget line items for the police department, there's a budget line item to replace vests and other line items for equipment, and the same with the fire department, different equipment is a line item. I'm just curious about why this is coming in as a warrant article and rather than a budget line item. And also, the police department in Bristol, as many police departments in New Hampshire have, they have a nonprofit branch. And the Bristol Police Department has a Bristol Police Association, which is a nonprofit. The mission of that association, one of the missions, is to do fundraising, to raise money for equipment for the police department. And I'm wondering whether that was pursued and why or why not, and why this is coming in as a warrant item instead of those other options. Thank you.
Can one of the selectmen address why it's a warrant article and not part of the budget?
So, the reason this isn't in the budget is because this is a, you know, a once every so many years purchase. It's not a regular purchase. So the police department, on a regular basis, has to, they have to buy ammo for training. They have to, so the vests are on a rotation to be replaced every so often. These, in this particular, that's not the case in this particular case. We've kind of gotten behind the eight balls, so we felt it more appropriate to bring this to the taxpayers rather than raise the budget $25,000 this year, because then, just in being responsible, if we raise it $25,000 and put this in as a line item, then it sits there next year. And not that the police department would do this, but it has the potential for them to say, you know, we're gonna take something else out of this line item and buy this extra equipment we don't need necessarily. So I'll say when Chief Bean first came to us with this article, I actually, my initial response was, enough this year, put it off till next year. But then I heard him out. He explained that they've been having some issues. Chief Woodward would know, excuse me, Lieutenant Woodward would know far better than I would, but I know they had some issues where a couple of units had to be taken out of service this year. And essentially, it's become a safety issue. So if they're down X amount of firearms, it's not like they, each officer is assigned their own firearm. They don't pass them from officer to officer. And that, I'm sure he could explain to you, there's many reasons why they do that. But as far as the association's concerned, I would defer to Lieutenant Woodward on that. But I believe that is typically more for the benefit of the officers themselves, rather than to... But I'm not as familiar with it as you have already read that statement, so maybe, Tim, could you?
Yeah, so the association, the association's not specifically to provide equipment for the department. The department has to provide that equipment. And that's by law, state law says that the department needs to.
You need to speak into the mic so people can hear you.
So, the department has to provide that, you know, equipment that we wear, that you see, not the association. The association's the betterment of other things.
Okay. Herb?
Herb Darcy, Lamont Road. Is there any potential buyback on the old weapons?
Yes, we don't have a definitive number yet, but we'll work with the retailer, and they typically buy them back at a small price.
Other questions or comments? Yes, sir.
David Marshall, Green Street. What weapon specifically are they currently using, brand and model, and what are they being replaced with? I just have a concern about some of the weapons that are out there that certain police departments have that have a known safety issue that has not yet been addressed.
So we currently have Smith &amp; Wesson 9mm, and we're looking to go to the Sig Sauer 9mm.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Sean Legu, moved to close debate, and was there a second? Rosemary Darcy, I think. Actually, who's that up there?
Andrew Litz.
Andrew Litz. Try to get as many people in the minutes as we can, okay? We have a motion to close debate. This is on Article 16. All those in favor of closing debate on Article 16, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed say nay. Now voting on Article 16, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $25,000 for the purpose of purchasing replacement firearms for the police department. All those in favor of Article 16, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed say nay. You've adopted the provisions of Article 16 just as they appear in your warrant.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to restrict reconsideration on Article 14.
Okay, there is, uh... Selectman Glassit moved to restrict reconsideration on Article 14. Is there a second, excuse me, to that motion? Second, Selectman Millbrand seconded that motion. Okay, this would restrict reconsideration during this meeting. Everybody understand that? Just Article 14. The motion was just for Article 14. All those in favor of restricting reconsideration on Article 14 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed say nay. You've restricted reconsideration on Article 14. Article 17. To see if the town will vote to establish an emergency projects capital reserve fund under the provisions of RSA 351 for the purpose of funding energy efficiency and renewable energy projects, outreach initiatives related to increasing energy efficiency and/or reducing energy costs, and for recovering grant matches related to increasing energy efficiency. And to raise and appropriate the sum of $10,000 to be placed in this fund. This sum to come from the unassigned fund balance. Further, to name the select board as agents to expend from said fund. Is there a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Warden, I move Article 17 as written.
Moved by Selectman Brown and seconded by? Seconded by Selectman Glassit. And would you like to address that?
No, I'm going to defer comments to Paul Bemis, who's the chair of the Bristol.
Okay. Mr. Bemis, would you like to address the motion?
Yeah, Paul Bemis, 59 Castle Lane. This has been recommended as a way to put money aside for renewable energy projects in the town. There's very few ways we can save money in our town budget. Energy efficiency is one of them. And what they look for, in this case, Department of Energy, is looking for a category, a budgetary category for this kind of thing, and they award points for it. For example, recently, we applied this past year for solar ray for the new safety building. This was 100% grant, Department of Energy. The project was a $188,000 project. And they had a rubric for it. And one of the categories was maintenance cost. And if you didn't have a category in your budget for renewable energy maintenance cost, you didn't score as high. We only scored two out of the five points in that category. They funded everybody above 66 points. We got 64. So there were nine towns that did get that grant for 100% solar. We weren't able to do it because we didn't have a specific category. We argued that it was in our budget, we used another line item. They only gave us two points for that. So what this would do is allow us to have a little bit of room to be able to go after some of this grant money. There is more coming. The New Hampshire Department of Energy has more solar grant coming. New Hampshire Saves has money. And also, Eversource is talking about a battery program.
And also, Eversource is talking about a battery program. Battery program would save us a lot of money at wastewater treatment because we could store the energy and not have to pay demand charges there. But we need a little category in our overall budget to be able to do these things. Things like improve, mentioned already, the building, our town building, per our town offices is, is somewhat of a thermodynamic train wreck. We've already had that looked at, and we know what needs to be done there. New Hampshire Saves could help us. But generally, these aren't 100%. There's a little bit that needs to be done by us, often 20 or less percent, that needs to be put forward in order for it to be a match. So, that's what this is, and that's why the warrant article is there.
Questions or comments? You're easy today.
Let me look there or?
No, you can speak from here.
I just want to clarify, because it wasn't clear to me. I was, you're saying that the intent here is basically all for town property and town buildings? This isn't to help citizens improve their residence, right? Is that correct?
That is correct. This is town only, town stuff. So, solar rays on buildings, energy efficiency, insulation, town buildings, town-specific, yes.
Other questions or comments? Hey, Beth?
Betty Seeler, 100 Summer Street. As a member of the trustee of trust funds, I am not in favor of this, because why can't we use the other town maintenance accounts in order to fund it rather than setting up a brand-new fund that the three of us are going to have to monitor? And now, you already can see how many funds we're monitoring, not only for the town, but also for the school district. So, I hope that it gets turned down, but not because of the energy issue, but because of creating a separate trust fund.
Other questions or comments? Chris Dergan, 410 Upper Bridge Drive. I'm also on the energy committee. And one of the things that the energy committee, with respect to grants, is bound to, is to provide, as Paul suggested, some sort of a teeth and skin in the game. And that's some sort of, some sort of funding to go along with your grant application. And these, I looked at five different RFPs that I've had some association with in the past. And every single one of these RFPs has a line, an item in there that requests that you have some form of funding. And the, some of the items in there could be capital costs, general maintenance, extended warranty, ongoing operation, internets, a lot of things, IOP are connected through the internet, administrative, overhead, or indirect costs. And this could be even the preparation or the submission of a grant. Now, some of these grants can be very extensive. The energy committee wrote this municipal solar block grant on behalf of the town. All of these, all of this work from the energy committee has to go through, has to be vetted, and working in conjunction with both the town administrator and the select board. Essentially, what this money does is this gives us skin in the green. They know that it's legitimate and that your energy committee and the town can, is endorsed and will support the ongoing operation and/or the money it might take to submit a legitimate grant. Thank you. Selectman Glassett?
Just to address Ms. Seeler's inquiry as far as whether that would cover it or not, Town Council has informed us that it would not. So, as Paul was saying, we were scored lower because we didn't have a dedicated fund to cover those, to cover that maintenance. Just for your information, that would not cover the requirement. For new projects, sorry.
Anybody else want to comment?
Just one last thing. By the way, savings on this one for the solar ray, we're expecting the new energy, the energy cost for the new safety building to be in the range of $30,000 a year. This solar ray would have cut it in half. $15,000 savings in the first year from this project. But again, we didn't, we weren't in position to do it. Proposal we submitted, as Chris recommended or suggested, 39-page proposal that submitted on this thing. These people want a lot of detail. We missed it by four points. Two points, 64-66.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Motion to close debate.
Second.
Who, who made the second?
Janet Medcalf.
Susan Duncan.
Janet Medcalf actually made the motion to close debate, because I'm tired of listening to Rick up there. And, and is there a second? And give me, Lucy O'Keegan. And I want you to know that there are, there were three people here from the class of 1966. So, it's been moved and seconded that we close debate on Article 17. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. You've closed debate on Article 17. You're now voting on Article 17. Rather than read it again, just note that if you vote in the affirmative, you will adopt the provisions of Article 17 just as they appear in your warrant. All those in favor of Article 17 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, say nay. You've adopted the provisions of Article 17 just as they appear in your warrant today. Article 18, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $16,700 for the purpose of purchasing, installing, and maintaining four new trees in Central Square. And is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 18 as written.
Selectman Glassett moved the Article 18 and seconded by Selectman Dion. And would you like to address it?
So, back in early 2024, we were forced to remove six trees from the downtown area, all ash trees, which were all diseased trees due to the, I would defer to former Selectman and future Selectman Sean Legu to explain the Emerald Ashbore disease. But ultimately, those six trees had to be removed, which I'm sure you've all noticed as you drive, as you drive east on Summer Street. So, the board started looking into solutions to, to, you know, add back to that area, to beautify to that area. And, you know, we initially kicked around the idea, you know, do we buy three trees and we'll plant three trees? What we ultimately kind of got into is, you know, we could spend a lesser amount of money than, than the $16,700. We could go and spend $5,000. But that $5,000 would, there would be no guarantee that those trees would survive. So, as you may have seen, I believe it was probably 12 years ago when we did the, the project downtown, a lot of those other trees around town have had issues and have had to been removed because they didn't survive. So, our biggest concern was that if we are going to spend taxpayer money to replace these trees, we want to make sure they actually thrive and survive and continue to grow and that, you know, 70 years from now, when some other weird disease comes up and they have to be removed, you know, there's still, there's still something there, and they haven't been replaced four other times in between that. So, we sought out quotes from area companies. We ultimately met with Belknap Landscape, who has a separate tree care division. So, this cost not only includes replacing those three trees, but it also includes the cost to replace the town fir tree that was in the middle of the square that was removed. And we've had a temporary Christmas tree every year that's had to be installed and removed every year. So, not only this, so this includes the, the trees themselves, the installation of the trees, and aftercare of the trees, which was the main concern. So, if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer anything. And also, I would, Sean Legu is somewhat of an expert in this area, so I would ask if he has anything to add that I have missed, please do so.
Questions or comments? Mr. Forster?
Couple comments, couple questions. Sean Legu, Overlook Drive. Sorry. I took a close look at the, I was involved in the early stages of this, and we looked at some other opportunities. We looked at going to Emma's and buying three of the largest trees she has and putting them in there. And, you know, cost-wise, yeah, you would have saved, you would have saved, although at that time, we weren't talking about the Christmas tree, so I can't speak to that. Would have saved a little bit of money, but none of our, you can't, you can't account for mortality. Just because it's a larger tree that you're installing and, and, sorry. The largest tree possible to be planted is what you want to go with, just because it has, it has a higher rate of survival, and it already has a good start in life and is, it won't struggle those first few years. So, looking at the, looking at the proposal and looking at what I have been involved in for clients, when you throw in the Christmas tree, I believe this to be a very reasonable number based on the warranty and the, and the aftercare and the installation. You can just dig a hole and throw a tree in there, but these folks know what, what they're doing. They're going to have soil amendments. They're going to make sure that the tree is watered correctly for the first, for the first period of time. And I do highly recommend this article. I do have a question, though. What is the, how many years on the warranty? Okay. Thank you. Yeah, that's pretty standard. You sometimes see five, but the price tag would be a lot, would be higher. So, I do recommend you vote yes. Thank you.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes. Yeah, you mentioned that the trees that were removed were ash trees, but I don't see what type of trees they're being, they're being replaced with.
So, they'll be replaced with three red maples and one Norway spruce, which would be the one in the center, that'd be the Christmas tree.
Yes, sir.
Hi, nature at Crescent Street. I'm in favor of this, perfectly comfortable with the number. But are we bound to Belknap Landscape, or are we going to bid on this or getting three prices? Because in my experience, they're pretty expensive. Thank you.
Did somebody, I think the question was, is this going out to further bid, or are you committed to this?
We're not committed, so we have two numbers. We will certainly seek a third bid if, you know, if that's what you folks desire, and I think it's a good idea myself. We did approach some other local landscape companies, but they weren't comfortable, they wouldn't have provided any type of warranty or anything like that. So, as I said before, you know, they might be cheaper coming in at 5, $10,000, $12,000, but they're providing no guarantee whatsoever. So, we'll work with Christina, the town administrator, and seek out a third bid before we proceed.
Mr. Morrison?
Carter Morrison, 262 Morrison Road. Why don't we just find a person that will actually donate the trees? And if, within three years, these trees don't survive, go down your path. But as of right now, I think we spent a lot of money. Let's keep the small town, small town. Thanks.
We've got plenty. We can put in. Yes. We're planning for three years.
Tom?
Tom Keegan, Roby Road. The, the trees that will replace the ash trees, they will be planted on town property.
I think the answer I get from the selectmen is yes.
Okay. Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none? Is there a motion to close debate?
Motion to close debate.
Frank Dolph moves to close debate. And a second?
Oh, seconded.
How about this gentleman right here?
Tyler Ford.
What?
Tyler Ford.
Tyler Ford. Seconded by Tyler Ford. So, we have a motion to close debate. All those in favor of closing debate on Article 18 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. You've closed debate on Article 18. That's to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $16,700 for the purpose of purchasing, installing, and maintaining four new trees in Central Square. If you vote yes, you'll be adopting the provisions of Article 18 just as they appear in your warrant. All those in favor of Article 18 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, say nay. You've adopted the provisions of Article 18 just as they appear in your warrant today. Article 19, to see if the town will vote to modify the purpose of the existing transfer station revolving fund created in 2014 pursuant to RSA 3195H from promoting recycling through improved transfer station operation to additionally include recycling through improvements and maintenance to transfer station operations, including equipment. And to add that all recycling revenue from cardboard and aluminum will be deposited into the fund, and the money in the fund shall be allowed to accumulate from year to year and shall not be considered part of the town's general fund balance. The town treasurer shall have custody of all monies in the fund and shall pay out the same only upon order of the governing body, and no further approval is required by the legislative body to expend. Such funds may be expended only for the purpose for which the fund was created. And is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 18 as written.
Moved by Selectman Milbrand and seconded by?
Seconded.
Seconded by Selectman Brown. And would you like to address your motion?
Unlike my nature, I'll be brief. Quick history, the fund that exists was created in 2014 because Bristol had been contributing to a statewide, or at least a regional, fund to do a recycling separation plan. That went belly up, and we needed a way of receiving the money back. It was about a quarter million of dollars, plus or minus. This fund was set up that way, and the wording was to be used for new, new equipment and improvements. And we used that money to redo the transfer station to where it is right now. Then in 2021, and we didn't use all of that money, there was still some in there. In 2021, we approved a large project to get a baler and start recycling cardboard and other things. The money for that, for the baler, came from tax appropriation, some from this fund, and then also, we bought a skid steer out of the highway fund. So, since the, since we started recycling cardboard, the payback was approximately two years to refund, to go back to the tax amount. It was four years ago, so we've paid more than the $22,000 in taxes back. What this article will do is two things. It'll start taking that money that we receive from cardboard and also aluminum now, and additional, and any, you know, the baler is much more useful than just cardboard. So, it'll take the proceeds from that and start replenishing the amount that we took out of this fund to, to further enhance that. And to make this fund a little, a little more usable going forward, we really don't need any new improvements, but now there's a maintenance issue that we have with the new transfer station. Repairs.
Repairs, the regular solid stream compactors, these things need maintenance and replacement. So this will allow this money rather than tax money to be used to do the maintenance at the transfer station. So the two things this does, changes the wording to allow us to use this money for, for maintenance as well as new equipment and also starts replenishing this fund with the money that we're getting from cardboard. Another quick note, just to pat the committee that did that cardboard recycling on the back, is we not only are doing our own cardboard, but the town of Alexandria asked, they wanted to recycle, but they don't want to buy equipment. So we take their cardboard. We don't pay them any money. They just make the savings in their, in their trash and we get the money for it. We initially thought cardboard was going to be about $50 a ton. We've been averaging $100 a ton, so it's a very good thing. Thank you.
Questions or comments? Paul.
Lake Street. I'm just curious, how much revenue had been generated? We used to have a lot, and I don't have strong enough glasses to read it on the revenue sheet, but I know we had the Bristol boutique and there's been other revenue sources. And I'm curious to know what, what amount have we been getting in, in revenue? I support the project. I was just curious because that's going to take from, you know, if, I'm just spitballing again, if we had $5,000 in revenue, that's offsetting the general taxes and I'm curious how much that is.
Initially, we, we weren't keeping track of it, but since I, this, this article is here because of me. So we've been tracking it better and we've been, the actual revenue stream is about $8,000 to $10,000. The additional benefits is every ton of cardboard that goes, that we bail is not going to single stream, so that's $80 savings still from the general fund from doing this. And also there's, there's less tipping fees. So there's some harder to track savings that we have, but in general, we've been doing $8,000 to $10,000 a year in revenue from the cardboard and the aluminum. And that's what would be going into this fund. And also, as I said, the initial $22,000 that we spent in the baler project has been more than repaid at $10,000 a year, obviously for four years.
Other questions or comments? Paul?
So the budget committee is, these are shared with us before the meeting and we're asked to vote on our recommendation. And since it was unanimous, you know that I voted yes. But I asked the same question, how much money is this? And I just want to share with you that I have a little bit of a disagreement with Mr. Millbran about this. We spent money from three different places in 2021 for the, whenever we did the corrugated recycling stream. And he's focusing on just one of those three out of general revenues. And so he said it was a two-year payback and we've done it for four years and you were all set. But the total amount we spent is a seven-year payback. So I was questioning, gee, if we've only been paying back for four years, we haven't paid back the, all the money, the money from the truck, the highway fund for the skid steer and the money out of the revolving fund for the, for the benefit of the recycling transfer station. So I kind of would like to see that money get paid back too, but at this point, this also will benefit the town. So I'm kind of in favor of it, but I, I think that this money being spent here, as Paul Manginell pointed out, it's going to divert money out of our general revenue stream and into our dedicated fund. So there's, there's other things to think about.
Other questions or comments? If not, take a motion to close debate. Susan, would you like to make a motion to close debate?
Sure, I'd so do that. Make a motion to close debate.
Susan Sedano moved to close debate on Article 19. Is it, and that's seconded by Boak. You've moved to close debate on Article 19. All those in favor of closing debate on Article 19 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, say nay. You've closed debate on Article 19. You're now voting on the article itself. It hasn't been amended. I'm not going to reread it, but if you vote yes, you'll be voting to adopt the provisions of Article 19 just as they appear in your warrant today. All those in favor of doing so, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, say nay. You've adopted the provisions of Article 19 just as they appear in your warrant today. Article 20, to transact any other business that may legally come before this meeting. Is there? I need to advise, anybody who was elected on the ballot on Tuesday needs to stay to get sworn in following the meeting here today.
Couple of quick things. Thank you everybody for keeping today brief, so I'll try and do the same. Thank you to our outgoing select board members, Carol Brown, who has served for the past three years, and then Les Dion, who has served for, I think, the last six, nine years, so. And also on that note, a welcome to our new select board members, John Miller, if you want to stand up, and Sean Leguio. Welcome back. Big thank you to our election staff and volunteers, not only for today, but also for Tuesday. They put in a lot of time and effort and particularly a long day on ballot voting day at Old Town Hall. So a big thank you to our budget committee, Paul Regan Chair and the rest of the committee for their time and effort spent on this year's budget. And I also want to thank our department heads. I didn't have a chance to recognize them at the beginning of the meeting. I kind of forgot about that and skipped over it. So our library director, Patty Hayward, Jeff Chartier, our water and sewer director, Victor Greenwood of the Highway Department, Joanne Bailey of the Land Use Department, and right next to her, Chuck Cullen from the Solid Waste Department. So Lieutenant Woodard was here. I believe he's Lieutenant Woodard? Oh, no, he's right there. Lieutenant Woodard, thank you for being here in absence of Chief Bean, who is coaching the boys' three, four championship team at a tournament in Rhode Island. So we wish them luck. So Chief LaRoche, LaRoche of the Fire Department, I think is still here. Thank you. And I think, I don't think, oh, Rima Simpson, our town clerk. How could I forget her? I'm looking at the audience, so thank you all for being here. Thank you all for your efforts throughout the year.
What's that? I'm getting there. Just like at home. And thank you to our town administrator, Christina Goodwin, and her staff in the executive office, so. And last but not least, thank you to all, our, welcome to all the election winners in addition to John Miller and Sean Leguio. And as Ned had said before, if you could all please hang around and be sworn in for your position by Rima, she'll meet you right up front here.
So thanks, thanks, everybody. You were, thank you. Thanks. Yeah, hold on. So I just want to thank everybody. Everybody was terrific today. You did a great job. And I'll take a motion to adjourn from Paul Regan, seconded by Rick Albers.
Go.
All those in favor of adjourned, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. We are done.